This evening, we are honored to have Pastor Joel Brandt from Spirit of Christ Lutheran Church provide our invocation, so please rise if you are able and remain standing after the invocation for our Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Spirit of Christ Church, on behalf of our citizens, thank you for your work. I see agenda items these weeks about a major bond proposal, financing for library, streets, parks, and recreation. You're talking about school awards, expenditures for public safety and transportation, and numerous civic outdoor events this summer in this beautiful city. You know you care for 87,000 residents and more than 6,000 businesses. You partner with others in government and civic life, and you've helped Troy earn respect and honor throughout the Detroit metro area and across the state. Once again, I'm honored to be with you. Thank you, and may I offer this prayer for you and for Troy. Lord of love, Creator of the universe, bless the public servants gathered here tonight and the citizens with us, that we do our work in a spirit of wisdom and charity and justice. Help these public servants use their authority to serve faithfully. And gracious God, uphold them when the work is difficult or contentious. Use us as citizens to support and honor them for their work's sake. Make the diverse fabric of this city a delight to all who live and work and visit here, and a strong bond uniting people around common goals for the good of all. Give us grace to work for a city where neighborhoods remain vibrant and whole, where the lost or forgotten in society are supported, and where neighbors care for neighbors. Teach us to remember and care for the poor. Guide and protect all who work in public safety, all who serve and protect and defend the public order, all who provide care in health and service to others. Grant us a civic life rich in meaning, peaceful, and a blessing to all. We pray in your holy name, gracious God. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that this evening. I will call the July 14, 2025 Troy City Council meeting to order and ask for the roll call for Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Councilmember Chanda?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
All present this evening. There are no certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have no carryover items and no public hearings, so move right into public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We have a handful of people signed up. Same rules as always per our council rules of procedure. You're given three minutes. It's addressed to the body as a whole. It's not a back-and-forth session. And when the light turns yellow, you have one minute left, and when it turns red, you are asked to stop because your time is up. Those are the same rules that'll apply to those that have signed up for later in the agenda for the items not on the agenda. So with that said, first up, I'll call Dave Niffen.
Good evening. Dave Niffen, 5501 Boros. I'm now serving in my sixth consecutive term as HOA president of the Golf Trail subdivision. Our tiny sub in Troy is only 196 homes, but we were founded over 50 years ago, way back when Rochester Road was only two lanes. As a fourth generation of my family to live in Troy, I know and have known many of my neighbors all my life. Maybe it's because I know my community so well, I have consistently fought to keep the dues from going up in our neighborhood. Not with force, but with logic, reason, due diligence, and countless volunteer hours along with my fellow board members, making sure we can provide the very best for our residents properly and efficiently. As custodians of the HOA, we have a fiduciary duty of care with our neighbors' money. And in that capacity, we are officers. As officers, we must act in the subdivision's best interests as a whole and be financially responsible as best as possible. We take no outgoing expenditures lightly, and we are accountable for everything we do. While our dues are very small compared to the property taxes we pay in this city, we treat every dollar with the same respect as if it was followed by several zeros. Because ultimately, it's not our job to judge others' money or budgets or how they spend or earn their money. It's our duty to manage responsibly the dollars that we collect for our organization. We never use the word "just" in context of money, as in it's just so many dollars or amount of dollars, because it's not just anything. A dollar means something different to everyone. In my sub, I know the mother of the three, of three children, a few streets over, whose husband left her. And on weekends when she drops her kids off with Dad, she picks up a side job bartending so she can pay the bills and make sure her kids can stay in Troy and go to Troy schools. I know the older couple down the street from me who built their home here in 1975. They've since raised their families and retired, and now they live on a fixed income. They can't afford the lawn service that they've had for years, so now they have to do it themselves. I'm familiar with the man on the edge of my sub who works a manual labor job for far less money than anyone in this room would work for. He comes home filthy and has to wrench on his older vehicle every night to make sure he can get back to the grind every single day. For these people, just 100 bucks could mean everything: medicine, keeping the lights on, or even staying in this community. For some people, they can easily throw money around. Perhaps they didn't put as much effort into getting it, but for others, money is a representation of their labor, their time, their time away from their family and doing the things they love. They're doing the things they hate so they can have a few precious moments with the people and the things they love. Until we can understand and empathize what money may mean to others, we should not be callously throwing around money and the word "just" when it comes to digging into other people's pocketbooks. If we are truly the city of tomorrow today, it's not because we plan new projects. It's because we built a community where people plan to stay, and we fight to make that possible for them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Niffen. Next up is April Church.
Good evening. Yes, nice hot day. I'm April Church. I am the president of the Friends of the Troy Public Library. And as you are aware, the Friends funded a survey to assist us in determining what avenues we need to take to support whichever bond proposal is decided upon. We received raw data today and feel the info garnered would be of interest to you tonight. Carl Schmidt, a long-term resident and president of the Miss City Market Research, was hired by the Friends to design and conduct the research. He has signed up to speak tonight and to provide you with some of the preliminary results. Thank you for all that you do for the city and your support in this project for a new library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Church. Carl Schmidt.
Still only got three minutes, Carl.
I know. Sorry, I have one page. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We're sending out a one-page infographic for you. The data is fresh. Literally, we got it in this morning, and the first thing I noticed is that there was an error in the first comment, so there's a handwritten correction there. So it is, the ink is wet as we go through this. So the Friends of the Library asked us to conduct a statistically significant survey of 400 residents and likely voters for the next election. We used the same methodology that we used to test for the last three school bonds, and all of those elections were accurately predicted within plus or minus 2% of what the vote was. So I want to just take you through, there's two halves of this page. It's only some of the preliminary numbers. We haven't split the data in a number of different ways, but I know you're trying to make a decision tonight, and we may be able to help you with that. So the left side is basically, how do people feel about the library? What are they aware of? What do they think we do well? And what I want you to look at there is essentially recognize that most of the people don't have an intimate, a frequent relationship with the library, and that in terms of even management of funds, if you look at the gray in the graphs, that's the people who say, "I don't know enough to even venture a guess." So when you look at the bottom graph on the left, there's a lot of gray in there, and that's essentially saying, "I'm not sure how our library stacks up to other libraries in the area in a number of different ways." So what that means is, you're not looking at a public that is fully informed about the library, but you're also not looking at a public who is in some way negative about our library. You're looking at a public that doesn't really understand the library. So you're talking about a mission in your communications that is about educating. So that's a good thing to do. You're moving from non-awareness to awareness as opposed to convincing people who are negative about this idea into something that's more positive. We tested both proposals that you examined in your special meeting on June 30. So we looked at the .9, and we looked at the 1.1. We randomized the order of the presentation of those two proposals so that you didn't have order bias as we went through. And what we found was that the .9 proposal actually had a significantly higher approval rating. It's still tight. It's showing 47% would likely say yes to the .9 mil proposal. The sample is accurate within plus or minus 5%. So that means that's up to 52% could be saying yes. When you go to the 1.1, you see that that likelihood drops to 35%. Among those who voted yes, 3 to 1 people preferred the .9 over the 1.1. So I know you're trying to make that decision tonight, so hopefully that'll give you some guidance there. The last thing is, we had a number of different questions we had around how people would feel if the millage passed or if the millage failed. And what we found is, across the comments, 70% of the people felt some remorse or disappointment if it failed. So even people who voted no were excited about the idea of a library.
Thanks, Carl.
And I'm out of time, so thank you. If you have any questions, you know where to find me. Thanks.
That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Now's an opportunity for council to respond and reply. I don't love getting raw data read into the record without being able to have a conversation about it, because I don't know if those .9 versus 1.1 were really spelled out, the difference between 20 and 30 years, and the interest rate changes, and if that was really captured in a poll. But Carl's nodding, but it's not a back-and-forth. But I appreciate those who've come forward to speak. I heard everyone's words, all three of you, very clearly. Anyone else like to reply? All right. We'll move on to... What's next? No postponed items, regular business. I want is board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, no city council appointments either. So we move on to I2, board and committee nominations. No mayoral nominations this evening, but I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Gunn for city council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Resolve the Troy City Council appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees. To historic district commission for term expires on 3/1/2028, Sandy Friesen. To parks and recreation for term expires on 7/30/2026, Matt Jansen. And to zoning board of appeals for term expires on 4/30/2028, David Eisenbacher and Aaron Green.
What's the vote? Moved by Mayor Protem Gunn, supported by Councilmember Chanda, that we approve the nominations of Sandy Friesen to the Historic District Commission for the term expiring March 1, 2028. Matt Jansen as the school board representative, our school district representative to the Parks and Rec Board for the term expiring July 31, 2026. And David Eisenbacher and Aaron Green to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the terms expiring April 30, 2028. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes city council nominations this evening. There's no request for closed session, so we move on to I4, 2025 bond proposal. That'll be introduced by City Manager Frank Nastasi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wait for it to come up on the screen. So tonight, we're going to be presenting information on proposed bond initiative for the November 4, 2025 election. There it is. So I know we met a few weeks ago, so I'm going to recap some of the important dates here real quick. So on January 11, we had a Capitol conference. We discussed all the different Capitol needs of the city. And then on February 24, we did some follow-up and also had more discussions on that. And council consensus was, they're interested in moving forward with a Capitol bond proposal for the various needs in the city of Troy. In April 16, the 2025 bond proposal, which covered the library, streets, parks, and rec, and public safety, was brought forward. And then on the April 28, HBM Architects presented early design concepts for the library, and we were there with the planning commission and gave everyone the chance and opportunity to weigh in, ask questions, especially about the growth and long-term use of the library. And then they came back, HBM, for the library schematic design and costs. That was in June 9. It was more completed design, updated with the cost estimate for the library, which brings us to the next slide here. And this is right out of HBM's slide, and it shows the projected estimate of just shy of 76 million. And they also included some other costs to consider. There's some program enhancements and some different prices if additional spacing was needed or required. So this is just an overview of the 137 million. So the new library would be 75 million, streets 35 million, parks and rec 17, and then public safety 10. This kind of breaks it down where the library would be 90,000 square feet for that 75.87 million. Streets is 35 million, so it shows Coolidge for 16 million, and Waddles for 14, and that's the majority of the roadway, and the various is other local roadways in Troy. And then you see there on the left, Parks and Rec for 17 million. So overall, amongst our parks, 7.5 million. Troy Farm is 3.2. For trails and pathways and enhancements, 3 million. Community Center 2.4. And I know we just opened up a pickleball. It's really the rage, and we have 1 million set aside on that pie chart for pickleball itself. And then to the right, you see the public safety, 10 million, which is fire apparatus replacement, also body worn cameras and public safety technology upgrades. So the options for the terms is 20-year term or a 30-year term. The 20-year term, you can see there, the millage levied for 2026 would be 1.13, and for the 30-year for that same would be .95. And then the estimated simple average annual millage rate required to retire the bond, you see on the 20-year 1.13, and on the 30-year, it's .85. That's due to the longer term and also because several of the projects would drop off, and the library would be the asset that would be viable for the 30 years. And at the very bottom, you can see the different estimated rates. And of course, anytime you go with a shorter term, you will get a better rate. So that's 4.5, and the 30-year is 4.75. So the 175,000 at the top is average taxable value home, so that would be like a $350,000 home. So the bottom there left for the 20-year option is 198, and the 30-year is 166. And to the right, the 20-year is $16.52 monthly, and then $13.86. So that's a $2.66 difference on the right and a $32 a year difference on the left. So went through it very quickly, but this is the part for questions. I've got staff sitting here available to answer any of the questions about any of the projects or any of the financing. And I turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate that. It is an opportunity now for questions, not discussion. We can't really, according to Robert's rules, have discussion until we've got a motion pending. So let's keep this initial stage to questions. We'll filter them through you, Frank, and you can determine who's best to answer. So questions. Councilmember Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few. So the first question, it's kind of confirmation. We saw some of the examples of recent debt millages in the city. Can you confirm what has been the length of previous debt millages that have passed in the city of Troy?
For that one, I would like to ask Bob Bruner, who's done some research on that. Unless you want to turn it over to somebody else, Bob.
Are you talking about the 1999 bond proposals?
Yes.
Okay. Recent is a relative term.
It's what we saw today.
Yeah. 20 years?
20 years. 20 years. So that's what I saw, but just for folks to know. Another question is, if I may proceed, and this might be for CFO Malsick, but how would, so wanting to know, how would a 30-year debt bond, how would that potentially impact, say, if we needed to take on more debt within those 30 years? Is that an issue already having debt, you know, existing, and, you know, maybe, you know, there's an emergency in City Hall we need to do, and we can do our own. We don't need to go to the public, but we can do a smaller bond. Just wondering, how does that impact financing?
I can start it, maybe turn it over to Rob. If there's any type of emergencies, we recently had an emergency with the police roof, and we were able to reallocate funds to that. We have different capital funds that we can use for those type of things, but I'll give it to Rob to go into maybe a little bit more detail.
Sure. I appreciate the question. There's a couple other things we can do other than the type of financing that we're looking at today. If we ever did have an emergency, obviously, our conservative practices, we would go, you know, take money out of our fund balance like we did for VFP and things like that. The other thing that we can do is with our banking relationships, we can take out certain types of installment loans from a Comerica or a fifth third bank. So there's that type of financing that we could do in case of an emergency. And then lastly, based upon that 30-year bond that you're talking about, the millage rate falls to approximately half a mil, then we could just do the same thing again and go back to the public if there was ever a need.
If I may rephrase my question. So as I was talking to residents, one point that was made by a resident is that we don't know what our capital needs. We may have a major need in 30 years, and their input was, maybe we don't want to have a 30-year debt sitting out there when there's something else major, because maybe that influences our ability to take on more debt. So does it? Like, is there, in terms of a 20, I'm trying to, between the 20 and 30 years, is there any impact on our ability to?
There is not, no.
Okay.
We, if you look in the budget book, I don't have the exact page, but in the budget book, it shows the amount of debt that we can take on as an organization, and we are way under that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Gunn.
Does the, does the bond affect our rating?
You mean the AAA rating?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can stay up there, Rob.
To answer that, no. So each bond is separate on its own, and so Standard and Poor's, who's our rating agency, they're going to look at all the factors that make up our city. And if things are as consistent as they've been for the last several decades, we should have our AAA bond rating affirmed during this, during this millage process or bond process. And so, and so because this is coming from a separate funding source, it would not impact our rating at all.
Okay.
Additional questions? Councilmember Hoderick?
There's some questions out in the community about our debt level and how much debt we have as a city. My understanding is we have very, very little debt, but could you speak to that here? Me saying it is one thing to someone coming from our finance director. There's a little more credibility. If you could kind of give a picture of our debt situation.
Sure. In our whole organization, we have two pieces of debt that are our own, and one is through the Downtown Development Authority, which is a separate funding source, and that debt's through the year 2034. And then we also have our golf course debt for Sanctuary Lake. And I, it's either 2028 or 2029, which is our last year that that debt is left. And so we actually have no debt in our water and sewer fund and no other remaining debt for our capital fund. So again, the amount of debt that we have is lower than almost every city in the, in the state.
Mr. Mayor, I looked it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rob mentioned it's in the budget. It's page 228. City's general obligation, legal maximum debt is nearly a billion dollars. Let's call it 948 million. And right now, we have 936 million available. We only have 12.825 annual net. Does that sound right?
Yes, that's correct.
So hundreds of millions of dollars.
That actually answers both of your questions. There's not much borrowing still.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And I was scrambling the, hundreds of millions of dollars in capacity because the tax base is so large, and we have so little debt now.
Thank you. Do you have another question?
Just, this is a repeat question, but the last time we went for bonds here in the city was 1999, correct?
Correct.
And we went for three bonds as a community.
Correct.
And those are all paid off?
Correct.
And often wisely, residents become concerned about our retirement. If we're fully, if our retirement is funded, maybe you could speak to that. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but...
No, that's fine.
This is the kind of conversations that are out there.
Those number, those numbers that you just referenced, Councilmember Brooks and I, we sit on the board together, and so our pension right now is 140% funded. It's what's called overfunded, which is a blessing, because each year when we start the budget process, we don't have to fund anything. Previous community where I worked at, we, not only we were poorly funded, so it's a big part of the budget. So we're blessed with having it fully funded, and that's because of our, the people that were here before, all of us did a great job. The second big liability is the retiree healthcare, and we are about 90% funded, which is amazing, because the average community in Michigan is probably somewhere less than 20% funded. The reason for that is, most communities do what's called pay-as-you-go, so they pay for the retiree liabilities as they go. We prefunded the liabilities. Again, people before I was here prefunded those liabilities, so that's why we're in such a great fiscal shape.
One more something related.
Did I answer your question?
You absolutely did.
Okay.
So hearing that, we talk about our budget is in great shape for good reason, except for our capital fund, which my description of the chart that comes at us is like this. And that's where our concern is and what this bond is about. Can you talk to that capital fund and why that is a bit?
I apologize how I sort of answered that. Like, when I, when I said we're in great shape with those funds, what I meant, what I said is like, that's helped us from an operating perspective. Capital's a different conversation. Again, we just celebrated a 70th birthday, right? And so there's a lot of aging infrastructure, sewers, you know, water lines, our buildings. And so, yes, that's what needs to be addressed. So what's happened, I've worked on six budgets here. I've been here six years, six budgets. And so over, over the last six years, the needs that are presented by all the department heads and which you guys hear about each year are much greater than the amount of money we have. The money for the capital fund has shrunk every year because when, without getting too much into the weeds, whenever we take the headly rollback, when we roll back the millage rate, our operations, we stay steady at 6.5 mils. It's the capital that's been taking the brunt of that, and that's been the longstanding practice here in Troy. So the capital fund has been reduced every single year that we have a rollback. Does that make sense? Okay.
I don't, it makes sense to me. I want to demonstrate. I'm asking the questions, residents, whether every resident listening understands.
Yeah. And if I may, what's really been exasperating is, you know, our number one priority every year that I've been here is public safety, right? We really take a, a public safety view to make sure that the residents are safe. And so when you look at the cost of fire trucks in my short career here, they've doubled, okay? The cost of fire trucks. So when we have to replace either a one- or $2 million fire truck, depending on the size, whether it's an engine or a ladder truck, those costs just eat into other things. And then, you know, City Manager Nastasi mentioned, you know, the roof that we have to repair at the, at police. Ever since I've been here, we started with Dennis Trantham, you know, with facilities. We've replaced almost every roof in this city, and then, and that's been our plan to work, to protect our buildings and work down. And there's just not enough money to do those other things that you saw on the list earlier.
So, Councilor Chanda.
Thanks, Rob. Following up with Councilmember Hoderick's comment, I believe, could you remind us how much? much money do we have left in the capital fund? I think if I recall correctly, it's less than $2 million.
Yeah, it is $2 million and I, do you have?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's purposeful. I mean, because I, I think the, I want to say the very first year that Bob and I got here, I believe the, the balance was over 10 million, but we've worked really hard to, you know, maximize everything we've, we've been able to do. We have 2 million and that's for that next emergency, whether it's a police roof or something else. That's why we've had those balances. And then the same is true in the roads. We, you know, we have two road funds. We have major streets and local street funding and those also are down to about a million dollars each. And, and so if the next question is what's going to happen when the, the next major road project fails, we're going to be borrowing from the general fund, you know, to help subsidize that next road project if there was an emergency.
Right.
But it's not, the model that we have just isn't sustainable. And then when you look at the library, that's a whole different animal of a whole different big capital project that we have to address.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I was trying to point out. It's like a paradox. It looks like we are doing well for, we're operating, but are, we're doing at the expense of lack of capital fund and that's basically showing up in this. So thanks, yeah.
That's correct.
Additional questions? Anyone who hasn't gone yet per our rules, but I'll get back to you, I promise. Doesn't look like, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So this follows up on the, the question of Councilmember Harakchanda is, so I have in front of me, this is our, the budget study session. If you can remind us, when we did the budget for this, we've just started this new fiscal year, it was created with the assumption there, we would hope there'd be a bond. Was that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So what we did was within the library this year, we, we paused all capital, waiting for this day to happen and then to see if, if it does go before the, the electorate, to see what would happen in November. What we've decided is November would, if this moves forward, November would be a pivot point for us, you know, just a decision tree. If the millage were to pass, then we know we have a certain path. If the millage doesn't pass, we're all going to be huddling up, regrouping and reprioritizing capital.
So Rob, that's what I wanted to follow up on. So what I'm seeing in the charts is this was created with the assumption we would have a bond. And even with that, the fiscal year, the proposed, which we passed, that budget for 2026, meaning by end of next June, there'd only be 1.7 million left. We've been talking about that.
Yes.
The capital fund balance. So what would happen that all the more if there's no bond? As you said, you're going to regroup and discuss, but I'm, I'm seeing that actually, that's, that's really scary, actually.
Right, yeah. Yes, everything says true and things that we might've put in this current budget that haven't been started, we're going to sit there and, and then reprioritize. And I, I don't want to be the one to sit there and say what's more important, but I can tell you that public safety is going to jump to the top and anything, nature center, aquatic center, recreation, library, we're going to have to cut that because we're going to always prioritize public safety. Frank, I, I don't want to misspeak for you, but.
No, I concur. It's what we've always done. It's what the citizens want. It's what we want. We want a safe community. So we, we have to do that and as we move down, then we have to look at all what's left and what's money left. And you're right, just prioritize and it's usually myself and my department heads and then we just put everything up and then we start seeing what we can cut and what money's left, what we can keep. So it's a difficult process.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So the main question I know residents want to know is why are we here? Like why, why are our capital funds where they are? I know the answer, but.
Well, my opinion is we're 70 years old and I think we've kicked the can on many buildings for many years.
Why do we do that?
Because, because the funding just has lowered and lowered and.
We have the lowest tax rate in Southeast Michigan.
That's right.
And we have, we spend the least per resident.
Correct.
And for cities with their own police department in Southeast Michigan.
Correct.
We've underfunded our city for, since the Great Recession. I was looking back at the, before that, I was looking back in 1999, the last time that the city of Troy approved a capital bond. And I was 15-year-old, 15-years-old at Troy High as a sophomore. And at that time, Troy's capital property tax revenue was 7.2 million, which is what it is now, the same nominal dollars. Yet due to inflation, it's worth half as much. So if we had the same capital funding we had 26 years ago, we would have had 14 million a year in capital funding. And now due to the Great Recession and where other communities substantially raise their property tax, Sterling Heights raised it 60% after the Great Recession, we got a small library millage, but mostly for everything else, no library, we stayed the same. Sorry, I know.
Yeah, but Councilmember Hamilton, you're absolutely right. Sterling Heights is our neighbor and I'm a resident there. You're absolutely right. Since the Great Recession, almost every community that I'm aware of, I know Warren where it used to work, Sterling Heights, several communities in Oakland County have had to raise their millage rates to make up for that taxable value loss. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, and that's what it comes down to is the, the tax rate we have, the level of service that is being demanded by our residents cannot be met with the lowest tax rate in Southeast Michigan. Well, it can be because even with this bond, we probably still would have close to, if not the lowest tax rate in Southeast, again, for cities similar to us. But yeah, we're just, it's just not sustainable at this level. Either we need a bond or we're going to have to make non-public safety cuts.
Additional questions? Councilmember Hodorak?
To your point, even before the Great Recession, you know, we, we do have an operating millage cap. We have to go to our residents and to our voters if we're going to raise operating. I think our residents have rightfully, arguably known and seen the reduction over time that we did during that era. We're, we're a very lean organization for a city of this size. The recreation hits at that time and the policy set by the council at that time, over time, residents came to understand other cities are having more than we have. And they, they are, they've been pushing us and then we come to city administrations saying, people want pickleball courts, people want another gym at the community center, people want, we looked at the aquatic center at one point with its capital needs, actually had a discussion about if it made sense to shut it down. There was pushback from, from residents. So in your experience, are you seeing a disconnect between the ask and the current desires? What the residents are asking from us of a revised policy, can our budget be made to match that? Or are we just constantly robbing Peter to pay Paul within our budget to, to do a little bit at a time?
I, I take this very seriously about ever trying to raise taxes. If anyone knows me, I'm very conservative, but we are up against it now. There's nowhere else to go. We're prepared if you guys don't move this forward or if the residents were to vote no. It's just that it's going to be bare bones. It's going to be very 2008-esque that there's not going to be anything extra for, for non-essential things. And I guess it's what does this community want? And I think that's where the vote would be. Yeah.
Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. And so kind of to add on to that, I'm trying to phrase it in a question. In the, in the past, in the past few years, we have received a lot of federal funds and grants and different kinds of funding. And do we anticipate any funding from the federal government or the state government in significant numbers that could make up any of this difference?
That's a great question. So the quick answer is everyone, I think, can read the, the room with the federal politics right now and I think that we're not going to have the same funding. I've noticed it in my life, it's ebbed and flowed and right now we're going to be on the bottom side of that. I don't see funding coming. And what's interesting is maybe why part of Councilmember Hamilton's question was why has it been delayed? It's because of this federal funding. So since 2020 with, and again, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but a couple of fire trucks, some, some parks and recreation stuff that was through COVID dollars, that's what you've seen. That's what I hope the residents understand. This, most of this was not city money. This was federal and/or state money. Sylvan Glen Park, the fun stuff that might be going on there, again, that's a, that's a grant.
I have a question that's kind of follows along some of this, then I'll come back. Is there a follow-up? Go ahead.
It's just, it's causing me to reflect back on the process. And city manager put out the charts, like talking about January in our capital conference. But honestly, I was watching a budget study session when I was first elected, which was a long time ago. So 12 years ago, we're, okay, we're doing okay, we're okay, but we've got warning bells about our capital budget. So understand as I'm at the table working with my colleagues, I've been walking around with the burden that we're going to, we have issues with our capital budget and our line for 12 years. Fast forward just a few years ago, our advanced budget study sessions, it was really more pronounced at us. A year ago, November, I can remember, we actually had a very heated collective discussion, trying to sort this out, trying to be careful about our own wallets. We're taxpayers too, our fellow residents, but seeing issues. And then the library came up since that discussion. Staff hunkered down this November, December, January timeframe and prepped for the advance and we walked out of our January advance looking at a need of 1.5 mils. I'm trying to recall in my mind how we ended out coming down from that. As I recall, a couple of months later, we became concerned about the effect on our residents of the unknowns in terms of tariffs and whatnot. Is 1.1 is not some great huge ask that is the be all end all, getting us everything we want either, is it?
It is not, no.
I'm just reminding myself that we pulled back and even the 1.5, we did a pretty major sort to prioritize, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And I know, the other thing I was going to say, I had lost my train of thought for a second, was the operations too. We keep telling you that things are good with operations, but anyone that works outside of this place also knows that healthcare costs continue to go up. They've been averaging seven and a half percent over the last decade. Our revenues don't go up seven and a half percent. Since COVID, we've had to battle the private sector for employees, so those costs have gone up for us. And so it's, and then when, when you folks ask us to do more in recreation for seniors, we have to then hire, hire some people to help with that. So, so even our operations is being challenged with, you know, just through the cost pressures that any other company on the outside is facing as well.
I have a follow-up to that, Rob, sort of. It was a question I was going to ask. I'm glad you just stated what you stated. And I know the answer because I've been to the budget study sessions and I've talked with all of you several times, but the question that often comes up is, but you guys are approving so much development in Troy, there's got to be more tax base there. Where's all that money going and why can't you fund something like this with that money? Because between you and Bob, I've seen charts and I know how that really works, but can you give a short, a concise answer frankly, as to really the effect of new development in the city of Troy versus what's existing in the tax base and how that really affects us?
Bob, do you want to address that one or?
No, go ahead.
And it came, it came up at the budget study session recently and I, there was actual dollar amounts given. I should have asked it in writing before to have it handy for everyone, but it's like, it was $4 million, I think, in new tax revenue, which is a lot of money, no question, but that, that goes to covering those operational needs you've talked about with all the increases. But that doesn't make a dent in the capital needs of the things, right?
I don't know the exact percent, but we're 98, 99% built out in this community. And so when you do take other special projects such like, such as a Kmart rebuild, first off, you know, some of that money's being purchased by U of M, they don't pay property taxes. The other part is that goes to a brownfield. So, you know, something even like a Kmart's going to be a decade before you're going to see any money come to the general fund.
Well, and I look at it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's 35,000 households or approximately in the city of Troy, you build sometimes awkwardly in a neighborhood, six new units, do the math, six, six new units versus 35,000 that are already existing, it's just not a huge impact on the property tax base.
It really isn't, no, no.
Right?
Right, yeah. The majority of our revenue increase each year is per headly, whatever the inflation factor is, and I think this year it's 3.1. So people just got their tax bills, they'll see a 3.1% increase in their, in their taxable value. And then you can usually throw on another half percent or so for adjustments that Kelly, our city assessor does, along with any type of new revenue from new construction.
Right. Mayor Portem, got it?
So if you get the, the bond was passed and you had the money and you caught up on all the capital improvement needs, how long before we're going to be saying we need more capital improvement needs? Because all we're doing is catching up on things, right? So what timeframe are we looking for another need?
Yeah, so I, I don't have, I don't have that type of crystal ball to tell you what, what's next, but I can tell you, we do an extensive capital plan and we, and what I would say to that is it's no different than people in their own households. When do you have to redo your kitchen? When do you have to, you know, redo your landscaping? It's probably that same concept. It's just that, Kurt, how many buildings do we have?
70.
We have 54 buildings to, to deal with. So, so there's, you know, so we, we have an assessment of, of all those buildings. You know, we feel comfortable with the projects that we've put forward for this bond. It's, I can't promise you that in 15 years, there, there's not going to be something else that pops up. But I can also tell you that our Pacer ratings from our roads are better than the surrounding communities that we have. We're asking to do two major roads in that bond proposal, Coolidge and Waddles. And so I, I believe our roads are going to, again, continue to improve, but you know, Scott will tell you, our city engineer, he'll tell you that there's, that the amount of funding that's coming from the state today just isn't keeping up with, with the cost of the inflation for the roads.
But the, so we have a capital improvement budget annually, right?
Yes.
And clearly that's been shortfall for many years. So I mean, that's the way I would look at how much we're going to be shortfall going forward again, right?
Yeah, yeah. And because we're not, we're not addressing the, the, because of our cap, our millage constraints, we're not going to fix the, the continuing funding source, that's for sure. Now there's talk at the state level about fixing some of the road funding. If that were to come to fruition, I can tell you that since I've been here, we've, we've put more money into roads than any other capital, capital item.
Got you. As a follow-up to that, Rob, is it fair, certainly as it relates to the existing library, fund, the capital funds that we've, or the funding we've been using for capital needs at that, at the old library, current library, those could be repurposed for, to help address future shortfalls of other capital projects. So there is a, I don't know if savings is the right word, but there is a, a reallocation of funds that would actually give some benefit over the, at least the five to 10-year plan of our capital plan. Is that fair?
Right, so, right. So that 1.1 mil that was passed for the library, we went from 0.7 mils to 1.1, I believe those are the. 0.7 mils to 1.1, I believe those are the correct numbers. So the initial from 0.7 to 1.1 was to help address some building renovation, right? So if this bond were to pass, I could foresee us taking a really hard look at that 1.1 mil and saying, wow, operationally, maybe we don't need all 1.1 and lower that millage rate. I could see that happening.
Wasn't the question I was asking, but that's interesting to answer, right?
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I guess my only thought was, addressing some of these projects upfront from a capital standpoint, no, you can't foresee what's going to happen in 10, 15 years, but it puts us in a better footing to deal with those as we go along, is how I view this bond proposal, for example. It doesn't, but no, there is no crystal ball. But there is a facilities assessment plan that, at least back in 2018, there was an update, and I know it's been updated in different ways since then. So it, we're not going blind into these, and we can't give a great answer right now. It's not something that's not being contemplated every single day at City Hall, right? Like, that's my clarification question. Just want to make sure. Okay. Councilmember Hodorick?
Follow-up question on that. You mentioned, I think, we have two outstanding bonds, one for the DDA fund, which is a different
Funding source.
Funding source. And then the Sanctuary Lake golf course. So if that gets paid off, do we see a reduction in the millage rate? I don't remember exactly where that gets funded.
So neither of those impact our millage rate at all. So Sanctuary Lake is an enterprise fund, so that stands up on its own. The golf rate, golfers pay for those fees and that type of thing, those fees that they, that we charge to play. And then on the DDA, that's a separate funding source.
Yeah, that is a different one, yeah.
And so, yeah, so those two really
I'm not sure about the golf course, because I think we do subsidize them, right? I mean, they do get some money from our general fund.
Yeah, they do. Currently, Sanctuary Lake owes money back to the general fund, and in 2028, when those bonds are paid off, then you'll see in the following years that we're going to start having the golf course pay back the general fund.
Right. So we'll get some monetary benefit after that, but it's relatively small in the big scheme of things, but that's
Yes, yeah. So it does not impact the millage rate.
Anything? Any other questions before we get to a little bit more discussion on I-4? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hodorick?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm going to go ahead and move a resolution. I would like to move I-4B, Resolution Approving Submission of Bond Proposal to Electors 20-Year as Printed in the Agenda Packet. Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hodorick, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve I-4B, 2025 Bond Proposal Resolution Approving Submission of Bond Proposal to Electors 20-Year as Printed in the Agenda Packet. And for discussion, I'll hand it off to you since you moved the resolution.
I have a bazillion thoughts that are roiling through my mind. I want to say, first of all, I'm a retiree, living here in Troy. I pay taxes. I'd rather not be asking for a bond from myself, if I can be candid, and wouldn't be entertaining the conversation if I didn't have to. Someone commented that it looked like we were pursuing this nonchalantly out in the community. We've been very chalantly about this for a number of years. It's actually a term that has been invented to be the opposite of nonchalantly, and it says, being careful, attentive, or concerned about something. I literally, at times in this position, over the years, have lost sleep about worries about our operational budget. I've also endured the frustration of residents saying, why couldn't you do the pickleball courts this year for 10 years, until we found a way to do it? Quality of life capital needs, public safety capital needs, capital being that word that means, it's like a building. It's like, in your house, you have operational, you buy your food, you have your day-to-day living. Your capital needs are when you need a new roof, a new driveway. Bonds are designed for capital needs, and that is the very thoughtful, full-throated conversation the seven of us have had from various perspectives. East side of Troy, west side of Troy, old grandma, already raised kids here, two younger people raising little kids. We've come at it from multiple perspectives. We come from different parts of the political spectrum. We're nonpartisan, but everybody has a bias when they come to the table. And I've listened so very carefully to my colleagues. I've also been listening to staff for years, watching them MacGyver budget dollars together, match with federal grants to leverage those dollars for greater things for our community, all in my firm belief that improve my property values, my investment in my home, and make this the great place to live, work, and play, and feel first and foremost safe in. The 1.1, though, there's a survey, what it didn't comprehend is that the 1.1 20-year is a compromised millage level that we came to. Honestly, if it was up to me and I was all alone and I was making the decision, I'd be going for 1.5. And we should have done it four years ago. Part of the reason we didn't is the school district, four, five, six, seven years ago, the school district was coming forward with a bond ask that this community, I applaud, approved. I personally took a step back in what I was thinking we needed to do to prioritize our schools, because if we're all being honest, whether we have little kids in school now or not, living here, we know our schools are the glue, the Velcro, the everything of what makes this such a solid place to be. So letting that go forward first made sense. We cannot kick the can down the road anymore. A 30-year idea for a portion of a bond, listen, I probably won't be here anymore, as some of those last years are getting paid, if I'm being candid. I'm trying to take good care of myself, but I could possibly be gone. And there's a part of me that says, you know, that's fine, let that float out there. Technically, we're, it's more money when you add in the interest. And I have the sense of thinking about the councils that exist going forward, the group of residents that are in the council chamber going forward, what we saddle them with down the road, how long is our, what's our fiduciary responsibility for the long term? And I am so grateful for the councils that preceded us, for being fiscally smart, fiscally conservative. We have a CFO coming in with private sector experience, public sector experience, you know, we really have a conservative budget. I've had conservatives in town tell me so. What the fair, right, clean, we're not playing games, straight-up ask, is what I feel, the honest, straightforward, simple ask, that I believe really represents the input we've had from the community over a number of years, represents the needs that we know about behind the scenes that maybe you all aren't thinking about, a capital plan that gets presented to us for the facilities, which is eye-opening when you sit through one of those and realize all the funding that's going to be needed going forward, the roads planning and what needs to be delivered. These are the things we think about when you're sitting in a role like this, that you wake up thinking about at 2:00 AM. And let me just say, the library building is done. Take a tour. Anybody questioning whether that building needs to be replaced or not, it just, it flat-out does. It's functionally obsolete. It is not, our staff is serving our community to the best of their ability from the library. The facility is not, it's dated, it's functionally obsolete. We deserve better as a community. So for these reasons, that's why I think this would be the fiscally responsible fiduciary vote that I should make tonight in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodorick. Councilmember Brooks?
I'll go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I will probably repeat a lot of the same things that my council member Hodorick said. I probably will say it a little bit more concisely, maybe, but, but yes.
Collective side, just to be honest.
No, I agree. I mean, obviously, I've been on
Emotional.
Yeah, no, it is, it is. I mean, I've been on council since 2019, and I agree. I mean, we've obviously been privy to a lot of information, a lot of meetings, that we understand the general public may not have seen and heard a lot of the concerns, and maybe now it's becoming more public, but these are issues that we've been, you know, struggling with for some time. I remember my first advance and just the entire conversation was about basically the infrastructure and how our infrastructure is just aging. And we really don't have the funds as it stands to properly take care of it. Where the cost of everything has gone up, and I think everybody can understand that. Over time, the cost of everything has gone up, especially after COVID with inflation, everything. But our tax basis, or our tax rate essentially has stayed relatively stagnant. And so we're trying to do more with the same amount of money, and at some point, you just don't have enough. And so we're just at a point that we have to do this in order to continue to provide the resources and the things that residents would like. I also support the 1.1 for a couple of reasons. Number one, I do believe that it is the most fiscally responsible thing for us to do. I understand the lower, you know, lower payments is appealing. However, when you add it all up, over time, you're asking residents to pay more money, a larger amount of money. And so I do believe that, you know, it is the more fiscally responsible thing to do. I have talked to neighbors, and a neighbor of mine, you know, he got it right away. I, you know, I laid these out, I proposed the 0.9 and the 1.1, and he said, well, you know, we're going to have a higher interest rate and pay more money over time? No, just do the 20-year. It doesn't make sense to do the 30-year. And I do believe that our residents are very intelligent, and they understand what that can mean, having, you know, more amounts of money essentially in interest. The second reason is because, actually, Councilmember Chamberlain Crane got said this at our study session, is that, you know, the concern that, you know, having a 30-year can potentially shackle future generations of council members. They may, there may be other needs, there may be other things that they want to pursue. And then there's this lingering bond out there for another decade that doesn't necessarily need to be there. And it's just nice to be able to move forward with a clean slate, not have to worry about this bond that's still kind of there, that we don't have to have. And just considering, you know, future, none of us will be here in 20 years, 30 years. I don't believe any of us will be here. But I think in consideration of our future council members and our future residents. And then finally, just the residents that I have spoken to, there didn't seem to be a difference. I didn't talk to anybody that said, if it was 0.1, I wouldn't vote for it, but if it's 0.9, I will vote for it. And so in general, I believe that the people that are for it seem to be for it, and the people that may be against it, maybe against it. I understand that there is, you know, the study that we were just kind of shown just recently, but, you know, there are some questions I have. Obviously, this is still very early in the process. I don't know how much, you know, the residents that were, that were involved in the survey kind of understood as far as educationally, that we're still working on a lot of, you know, the push forward with the education on this bond. So I'm not sure if they understood all of it. And also, this bond is bigger than the library. Obviously, the majority of the bond is the library, but there are other components that I think may be appealing to other residents as well. And I'm not sure if that was conveyed in this research as well. So for that, those reasons, essentially, I do support the 1.1.
Thank you, Councilmember Brooks. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to share a little bit about where I've had questions, and actually, where I don't have questions. So to start, I have vacillated between the 0.9 mil versus the 1.1. Especially, I am a person of data, and so, Carl, you sharing this today, I was like, oh, I wish I'd had this sooner and could have asked more questions. I think if it had been up to me, I would think about doing the 0.9. It seems safe, and knowing you can always refinance. But I also spoke with my neighbors, just like Councilmember Brooks, and what I heard from my neighbors, and I made sure to speak to folks, working families like myself, as well as some of our seniors who are on fixed incomes. And what they said was that they feel more comfortable with the 0.1 in 20 years. And partly, their argument was to not be shackled with debt for so many years. I mean, I did ask the question of, does that impact future projects? It doesn't sound like it does necessarily. But still, there is that psychology of not being shackled with debt for longer than you need to. And it is cheaper, as we know with mortgages. A shorter mortgage, at the end of the day, you're going to pay less interest, it's cheaper. Also, I bear in mind the history of Troy. That's why I asked the question, just so we all know, the public, that what we've done in Troy has been 20-year bonds. So it's something that we're, we have a history of doing in Troy. It's not something that's different. So I am comfortable supporting the 1.1 mil option, as much as I have, you know, gone back and forth, but I've really wanted to listen to residents on that. The thing where I am very crystal clear is around our need as a city. And so I just want to share some comments, as our colleagues have, about why. To start, in my previous job, I worked for an employer that is a leader in economic development in cities around the country. And one of the things they had us do is, they brought in one of the leading experts on municipal finance, and we did trainings, a series of trainings. And I'll never forget the first training, where it was emphasized that a sustainable city is one that has its own resources to be able to cover its needs and what it needs to do, and that cities that have to rely on external grants and other sources of funding are not sustainable over the long run. So if you think of Troy in our budget, and it's so timely, we went through that budget session earlier this year, this was the first budget where it really hit home, and we talked about it tonight, that we are in a good place, but we have some serious constraints. We talked about that. One constraint is, yes, we cannot rely upon external funding, which, as I said, is not good anyways for a city, to feel like they have to rely on state or federal funding to meet needs. But also, as we said, new developments, even last year, $4 million worth of new investments is only enough, I will never forget this, is only enough to maybe pave a couple miles of roads in Troy. That is not enough to address a library. It is not enough to address the demands of our residents for pickleball and other needs. And just given that, the stagnant rate, and the fact that really, even with a bond, if residents, we hope, will pass, still, our capital fund will be left with $1.7 million, which is dangerously, dangerously low. So wanting to think about our future and how we shore up those capital resources. So I believe it's time to build a self-reliant Troy. A self-reliant Troy makes sure it has the funding it needs. It finds resources to meet the demands of residents, and a self-sustaining Troy recognizes that its facilities, many of which were built all at the same time, so they're all starting to crumble and decay all at the same time, but they were built for a smaller community. We are now close to 89,000 and more. These facilities, like the library, were built for a much smaller size of Troy. I support Troy finding its own financial solutions to fix I support Troy finding its own financial solutions to fix aging infrastructure and buildings, from the Troy Public Library to Coolidge Highway and Waddles. I am on Coolidge Highway almost every day and I want to see that thing fixed. And also to bolster, remember to bolster our police and fire with new protective equipment so they can better protect us. To be self-sustaining, I support Troy in building a new world-class library that fits the size and stature of one of the largest cities in the state of Michigan, known for its world-class learning environment. And not to mention, the library, I believe it's becoming an issue, a matter of health, safety and welfare, with mold, age headback issues, as well as there's no protection in the case, in the awful event of an active shooter. We don't have the types of protections needed. Plus, when I've been going door-to-door, speaking with residents in the past two months, I had multiple people, multiple people say to me, they are embarrassed by our library. They're not embarrassed by them, by what they get and by the resources, but they're embarrassed by its condition. One mom said that she orders things online and has them and then picks them up because she doesn't want to go in the library. Another grandmother said her son at Michigan Tech, when he's home, goes to Baldwin Public Library in Birmingham to study because he's embarrassed. He doesn't want to go, there's not space, it doesn't smell nice, it's not a nice environment. So he doesn't go to our Troy Public Library. So I support Troy in building and in meeting these needs and building more pickleball courts, expanded trails and pathways. I support Troy in upgrading our senior gardens with the things, supporting our seniors and what they need. These community assets, they enhance our quality of life and they bring our community together. They make us a community and not just a city. And so in all these things, I believe this is how Troy is going to prosper, to be truly the city of tomorrow today. And to do that, we have to start building today by supporting this bond. So I'm proud to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Share a lot of the sentiment of what fellow councilmembers said. As I said earlier, we have one of the lowest tax rates Southeast Michigan. We spend less per resident than most equivalent, similar comparable communities to us. The need for where residents want us to be is there. We need, we need this bond or we're not going to be able to deliver, no city could deliver the quality of service that residents here want at the current revenue level. So to me, it's debating between these two options. And I mean, I think they're both good options. I'd support either. I've made it known, I favor the 0.9 mils. If the majority council wants to go 1.1, that's fine, I'll, I'll still support that. I feel like the 0.9 option, I mean, yeah, we have raw survey data that suggests that that's more acceptable to residents. The right, we don't have house question, was it a very library-focused questionnaire? I don't know that. I don't have a lot of, you know, detailed data from residents besides the people I talked to, which is not general people. So there's not a lot to go, to go by, so the survey result is the closest thing I have to kind of a random sample. And it clearly shows that the 0.9 option is, is more desirable than 1.1. Now, as councilmember Brooks mentioned, we haven't settled on this, we haven't done our engagement with residents and residents probably aren't really thinking about this on a deeper level, so they see a survey and say, oh yeah, I'll take the cheaper option, fine. But the 30-year option gives us the option to do 20-year if we want. It means you can do 30-year or less bonds. So if, our concern is that if residents are more likely to support the 30-year version of this, we can do that and you can still do 20-year bonds if you want. And that's kind of what we're proposing is 20-year for all the non-library options and 30 for the library. That's a decision to be made by future councils. So I'm curious where the rest of council is at on this. I know councilmember Chamberlain said she'll support 1.1, but also preferred the 0.9. I really don't know where the rest of council is on that. I mean, I'll, I respect where the majority is, I want to support the bond, but I think the more likely option to pass is the 0.9 option, to be honest.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Tatum.
I can go next, yeah. I mean, I, I kind of, a lot of the things I wanted to say have been said already. First of all, I believe we do need the bond, that's $137 million, that is fixed. I am debating in my head whether it's 20-year versus 30-years and I personally do prefer the 0.9. I know we have some data and I believe the questions were asked explaining it's 20 versus 30, it's not just saying 0.9 versus 1.1. But again, I will go with the majority. I've been in the council for a year and a half, but I've been, I lived in Troy for 26 years. You know, Troy is my home, my son grew up here, been to the library. I truly believe that building cannot be sustained. We do need to have a new library building. I've been talking to my neighbors, one neighbor that moved to Troy a few years ago with three schoolage kids. And we have been talking about Troy in general and she's so happy to be here, talked about the library, how friendly the library staff is, how nice the service is. Then the question of building came up and said, yeah, the building is, really needs some improvement, you know, is that, is that something you guys can do anything? And we, I mentioned, yeah, I probably have heard somewhere, we are looking at building a new building and her eyes lit up, you know, she said, what can I do to help? And I believe we, as the council, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to give the residents that option to vote for a new library. And obviously, if people do, those who think otherwise, they also have the option to vote no. So we cannot not give them an option. So I will support the bond. I am leaning towards 0.9, I believe it makes more sense because it's initially, the payment will be lower, you know, it's 0.2 mil, it's 0.2 mil, it's not a lot, but it is going to be lower and in the long run, if I think it's the average is 0.8. You do pay more as a city, I understand that, but then the money that you save, that also grows, you know, grows interest in your own account. So it's kind of washes up in my mind. So I am curious to know where the rest of the council is, but I will vote yes either way. I mean, I'm going to vote either way, my preference would be 0.9 for 30-years. Understand it makes it a little confusing because it's hard to explain to people, we're paying off part of that in 20-years and it is the useful life of the roads is 20-years, that's the rationale behind paying off everything else but the library for 20-years and then the useful life of a library is more than 30-years, I would hope, but at least 30-years. So we'll be extending that bond for 30-years. But I am obviously going to support it, but my preference is 9, but I'll vote, go with the majority and put either one, so.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gun.
Since we started this discussion on the bond, my fellow city councilmembers, department heads, Mayor Baker, they know I've had a different take on how to approach this bond. I support investment in Troy. I mean, this has been my home for 40 years. I support the improvements for the library, for roadways, police department, Department of Public Works, and I know these are critical assets that impact the quality of our residents' life and today and for generations to come. But I also believe strongly in a citizen's choice. You know, the current proposal combines 75 million for the library and 62 million, you know, for the roads, for the police, for DPW improvements. And I support the efforts to improve our community, but I believe it'd be more respectful to our residents and more consistent with democratic values, present these two issues and issues as a separate bond. I know I'm in the minority, which is pretty common for me, but I'm not prioritizing one initiative over the other, okay? I believe that separating these proposals allow each to stand on their own, to have an open and focused discussion with the community. I think both proposals represent important, worthy in our city's future. I want to recognize and thank the finance team, all the department heads for your diligence and professional presentation you've given us, all the financial information to help guide us through this process. I think it's possible now for council and the public to fully understand the scope and significance of these projects. I also wanted to express my respect for my fellow city councilmembers. I know that we differ on this structure, but I value the dialogue and the shared commitment we all have in doing what's best for Troy. But ultimately, I believe giving the residents opportunity to vote on these issues individually empowers them to shape the future thoroughly, thoughtfully and responsibly. I trust our citizens to evaluate each project. I don't believe this is about dividing support, it's about strengthening the public trust and reinforcing the principle that Troy, your voice matters. I remain committed though to open engagement with our community and deleting respectfully and accountability. Little different approach, but I've been saying this since the beginning.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Gun. I've been serving here since 2015, not quite as long as Ellen. But from the very beginning, I was made aware of our capital finance issues. Capital can sometimes get overused, I understand that, and sometimes it doesn't make a lot of sense to people. I liked Ellen's analogy, you know, operating your groceries, your utilities, the stuff you go through under disposable nature, but the capital is your roof, your driveway. Different mayor, different driveway, if you're thinking it. I laughed when you said it, Ellen, I don't know what to say, but you'll figure it out if you don't know what I'm talking about. But, you know, the city of Troy is a wonderful, wonderful city and I sing its praises all the time and talk about all the wonderful things we have in our community, all the wonderful finance, you know, budgeting things we do. And I also blame myself for sometimes not telling the hard truth, talking about the hard truths of our deficiencies in some of the spending we have for our, the bigger projects that we have. The reality is, and councilmember Chamberlain touched on it just briefly, the city built up very fast in the 70s and 80s and into the 90s a little bit. And what that means is, all those buildings are going to fall apart at the same time. And I think our city staff has done an amazing job of evaluating all of our public facilities over the years and prioritizing sometimes in a pinch on where our money needs to be spent to keep things going along, sometimes big improvements, sometimes just to keep, you know, roofs from leaking and emergency telecommunications equipment from frying out. And I'm so grateful for all of that. But the reality is, that can only go on so long. And we are at a point now where as a city, we're 70-years-old, you know, this building I think was started in the 60s, we're not even addressing this building and this bond. But the library shortly thereafter, and we've heard a lot about the library needs, probably, and as much as I love the friends, probably more than we should have in some of these conversations, only because it's not just about the library. The library is a given to most of us up here at this table now, I think all of us understand that. And a lot of our community has recognized it because of a lot of the outreach done by our library friends. But what is not as well-understood and known is the other needs we have with our public facilities, whether that's buildings, whether that's streets, whether that's the unknowns that are going to come down and we need to be prepared for. Many of you are aware of some of the deficiencies in our parks. Our parks are wonderful and we do a good job of what we have, but I can't tell you how many times I've heard, well, why don't you have Innovation Hills? Well, Sterling Heights is doing this. And, you know, I always say, well, they raised their taxes, their community voted for higher taxes to pay for all of those things. But the truth is, we have a community now that is demanding a city that is not unrealistic to be asking for. And I think some of us have talked about, oh, we want to be the best city, we want to be the greatest. I want to get us at least on par with where we are compared to other cities and to invest the capital back in our community so we are stabilized. And I think that, that's a big part of this. Planning for capital needs is something that we get faced with during budget study sessions. Our city staff looks at this non-stop and they're the ones that are constantly fixing a pothole, fixing a big, you know, a problem in, in any kind of facility that we see on a contract on an agenda later. They're the ones that are worrying about it before we often are. And I know, I think it was 2017 or 2018, when I was on council, Ellen was there too, you know, we presented in a special study session with a facilities assessment or condition assessment report. And it was so thorough, after an evaluation of every one of our, our public spaces and our needs of what it would cost at the time in 2018 or 2017 dollars to bring them up to the level that they needed to be. And I know we've addressed a lot of those things over the years or we've patched work on some of them, but the reality is, to your point, Mayor Protem Gun, there's going to be things that are going to come up during the penancy of this bond, whatever it is, 20 or 30-years, that are going to have to be addressed in a different way. And the reality is, when you build everything so fast in the 70s and 80s, unless you're fixing every 10-years and making major investments, you're going to be faced with that. So the short answer to solve for that is really every 10-years, the city should be making a huge capital infusion to keep the facilities up to date. I'm not proposing anything on that level at this point, but that's really how that's addressed and how it should be addressed. And we're so proud of our low debt in this community and so proud of our low tax rate and I am, I sing its praises all the time and I rub it in Brian Barnett's face in Rochester Hills and Mike Taylor's face in Sterling Heights. They all wish they had what Troy has, if they were honest with you, if they've been honest with me. But the reality is, we retired the 1999 bonds in debt and we should have asked the community for more financing then to address these things. And we didn't, for a number of reasons. School district came about later, but there's always something going on that prohibits us from doing that, whether it was COVID, whether it was a former city manager who ended up in federal prison, whether it was a school district bonds, whether it was a community that says, that's enough, everybody. And we get that, and I get that. But now is the time to address these. My colleagues have all shared, almost, I mean, we're all singing from the same hymnal essentially on why these projects need to be done. There's, there's no denying that, we, we clearly are together on that need for our city. And it is comforting to serve with a council who all is on the same page in that respect. The question, you know, the motion on the table is for 1.1 mils for 20-years, which is what I support. I supported it at the study session, I think it makes the most sense. I think it's the most straightforward and transparent bond proposal. I think we have a very smart and educated community and they want to be told what they're going to have to spend, they're going to be told what they're going to get for it, and they're going to want to know exactly when it ends. And I think that that 20-year option at 1.1 mils, even though it is more than the 0.9 now, is the cleanest, most honest and most respectful ask for our community, from a fiduciary responsibility, from a fiscal conservative responsibility. The estimates from this bond alone, and there's a lot of different variables that relate to this, but to have the 0.9 for 30-years, that could be an extra $35 million in interest spent over those extra 10-years. And that interest are taxpayer dollars being spent. Most people would prefer to pay a fixed, it's not fixed with a bond, but it would know exactly what they're getting upfront and to pay it for 20-years and not have to worry about, well, which portion of the bond is going for 30-years and which is not. And the reality is, if we approve something that said 0.9 for 30-years, it doesn't mean we could just do it for 20-years, because if we did it for 20-years, we'd need 1.1 mils to pay it off in that timeframe. So that's why we need the 30-years. It's not as simple as doing that. It's not about flexibility, it's about just being straightforward and clear-cut. And the people I've talked to are concerned about their, their pocketbooks, are concerned about the money that comes in, the money that goes out, have watched what inflation has done to their property values that have gone up 5%, I think two, three of the past four years. And they're feeling, you know what, you're raising my taxes as it is. They're concerned about the school bond that was needed in our community but has increased their taxes. But they're also concerned about the services and the buildings we provide here in the city of Troy. And they want to invest in our library, they always will invest in public safety, whether that's fire apparatus, whether that's body cams, additional equipment. They drive down Coolidge, they drive down Waddles, they drive on all of our local roads, the hundreds and hundreds of miles of roads and sidewalks we have in this city that our community members are on daily. They will invest in those because they touch those every single day. I hate taxes. I, I do. Rob didn't say it, he kind of said it. He said he's conservative and doesn't like taxes. He's an anti-tax conservative, Rob, that's our CFO. Whether you like that or don't like that, that's who he is. But you know what the reality is? If I have to pay more on my taxes, I damn well rather pay them at the local level where I know they're going to go and I'm going to feel those effects every single day than send them off to Washington or Lansing where, no offense, but God knows what's going to happen to them right now. I support this bond because I want to know where my tax dollars are going in my community. And I know that the people in this city hall and the staff and the administration are going to work really hard to minimize the costs associated with a new library, they're going to get the best deal they can on the new roads, they're going to make sure our public parks and amenities have the, the facilities have the, the things that our community has been begging for, for the 10-years that I've been on council, for the 12-years that councilmember Hoderick's been on council, and certainly since since all of us has been on council. None of this is happening out of the blue. None of it is happening in a vacuum. We have heard from residents for years about what they want to pay for in our community. And I strongly support putting a 1.1 mil 20-year bond on the ballot in November so that our residents can have their voices heard, understand the facts, knowing that they're smart and educated, and they're going to listen and pay attention, and then make a decision at the ballot box. It's vitally important to our community. I, um, two quick things, and I know I talk long. I talk longer than Ellen, but she gets blamed for it all the time. But they left because they know. Mr. Nippon left, and I, none of us use the word just tonight. It's just a couple bucks more a month, because that is a real thing. Right now, it is just another cup of coffee for me in a month because I'm in that position. When I was a kid, I lived in a small apartment with my single mom on welfare, and an extra two or three bucks could have meant the difference on what I had for lunch at school those next couple days. So I know very well that a couple, two, three bucks can make a huge difference in someone's pocketbook, in someone's life, in their quality of life. I also know that it is ultimately better for them to have less interest being paid and to be able to pay it off sooner if they're going to have to do it. But I, I don't want any of us to ever think, or anyone to think, that we're just throwing around money like it's no big deal. We're shalotly thinking about it, as Councilmember Hoderek said. It's been very intentional, and it's very concerning to all of us, which is why we went from, really, the initial proposal said we'd need closer to two mils of capital investment. And we said, "Oh, that's, that's too much right now. We don't know what's going on in Washington. There's a lot going on. Let's bring it down." Then it got brought down to 1.5, and we've landed here around one at this 1.1. And it's $137 million, which is a ton of money, but you see how quickly it can get eaten up into important projects for our community. I wish we would have done it 10 years ago. The library would have cost half as much. We didn't. The community wasn't ready for it. The community couldn't, the council couldn't make that decision. It wasn't the right time. The right time is now, and I'm excited to support this resolution and to vote in favor of the 1.1 mils for 20 years. And my final word is, this community values public safety first. Obviously, the next item on our agenda is related to public safety and our police department. They've been patiently waiting to present their agenda item. Here comes someone now. But the reality is, we would be at picnic tables, or picnic tables in a dilapidated park having a council meeting to make sure our public state, safety stays fully funded. We, all of our buildings would go away, but our police department and our fire and our EMS and our public works would, would be the first thing, and they always are the first thing that we fund. And that will never change, regardless of this bond. I'll be really frank. Public safety is always first. But there's more to a community and more to a city that we also need to address. And so I want us to all come together and recognize public safety, parks and rec, streets and roads, quality of life and the library. That is what makes Troy the community that we all want to live in. That is what makes our, our community a place people will want to buy our houses when we want to sell and move out. Those are the reasons Troy needs to pass this bond and why I'm happy to put it on the ballot in November for our voters to have it saved. So that's where I'm at. If that answers anybody's question. Councilmember Hamilton?
So what I'd like to do is move to amend the resolution for the 14A option, see where the votes lie, and then go from there. So I'm going to move to amend the resolution on the table to replace 14B with 14A.
Seeing no support, I'll call for the vote on 14B. I-4B.
So which one are you voting on?
There was no support, unless some, no one supported his amendment. So we, the motion on the table is for the 1.1 mil for 20 years, which is I-4B, Resolution approving submission of bond proposal to electors 20-year. Right?
That's correct, yeah. Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Potemgun?
No.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Let's take a five-minute break. I'm so sorry, Troy PD. We're going to take a five-minute break. We're in recess.
All right, we'll go back on the record. Sorry it took a couple extra minutes. Next up is I-5 standard purchasing resolution for GSA cooperative purchase Lenko Bearcat G2 Troy Police Department and budget amendment. And that'll be introduced by our chief of police Josh Jones.
Evening Mayor and Council. I'm happy to introduce I-5 GSA cooperative purchase and budget amendment for Lenko Bearcat G2 this evening. Also brought Lieutenant Schuler with me. It's, he's in charge of our professional standards section and also in charge of our tactical support team. Should be a user of this vehicle and he's been leading this project for the police department. The Lenko Bearcat is an armored rescue vehicle which would be utilized by our tactical support team during critical incidents. It is designed with a specific goal to help law enforcement officers resolve the most challenging scenarios safely and efficiently. Additionally, the proposed armored rescue vehicle will be configured for medical treatment and moderate fire extinguishing use. Fire as a weapon is a trend seen in critical incident response around our country. We have several officers trained to respond for that scenario and this piece of equipment be what would be one of the few available in the region. An important mission for the Troy Police Department is to protect human life and ensure that its officers are equipped with the most current and tactically sound equipment available. The absence of an armored vehicle rescue vehicle on scene quickly during a critical incident can leave our officers vulnerable. The addition of this vehicle would protect our first responders and provide a critical rescue capable resource. Pricing has been secured for the purchase of Lenko Bearcat G2 in the amount of $426,108 as detailed in the attached quote. During the budget process, we estimated the project project cost to be $400,000. Therefore, this request also covers a budget amendment in the amount of $26,108. Funds are budgeted and available in the police department drug forfeiture fund. And with that, I welcome any additional questions.
Thank you Chief. Any questions? Councilor Chamberlain.
Thank you. So, lighthearted question for something very serious and then a serious question.
I like lighthearted questions.
So, the first one is, I remember the previous armored truck. We often would see that in the Halloween gathering with the kids. Is it going to be in the Halloween bash if we, if we have it on time?
Yeah, well, and I, Councilman Hamilton may ask also for a lead time on it, so.
You've done your homework Chief.
Couple answers there. Right now, we're looking at about 18th monthly lead time. So, we only anticipate having this for October. If we do, yes, we would definitely utilize this vehicle and make it available to our community for touch of truck events, different events that we have out in front of our police station and stuff like that. So, certainly it would be available and, and used for that.
Wish I could turn my computer around to make sure all residents can see it. I hope they look at it, it means all that it can do. Serious question is, can you explain to our residents more about the drug forfeiture fund? How those, as I remember, those are not tax dollars, those are funds that you have, if you can explain more.
Correct. Correct. So, we have a state and federal drug forfeiture fund available to our department. We've utilized that fund and we have to utilize that fund with approved purchases that directly allow us to battle drug crimes and public safety specifically. So, we're limited in what, what we can spend those funds on. It's funded not by taxpayer dollars but by forfeiture from investigations that our officers are due in both Troy and our task force officers that we have assigned to DEA, Secret Service, fraud, cyber fraud task force. And they've been, we've, we've utilized those task force for many years and have been able to build our drug forfeiture fund up to a point where we, we can have, we can look to make purchases, you know, this large because certainly 400, over $400,000 is a significant purchase.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilor Chandra?
Follow up on that, just could you maybe, you know, elaborate on what type of operation this could be used on? I understand like besides, you know, I guess it may be.
I mean, critical incident response is, is basically what it would be used for. We're not, it's not going to be out driving around patrolling the, the city on a regular, you know, day to day basis. But if we have an incident, which we do on occasion where our officers are in danger, there's gunfire or something like that, it would be stored in a central location, most likely our training center. And we have, we'll have several officers trained to drive it and deploy it. They can go and retrieve it and bring it to the scene. Our tactical support team is a ancillary assignment that we have 14 officers assigned to. They also do other duties as police officers. It's not a full-time team. But when there's a critical incident or emergency, they get basically paged out and they respond to the scene. And this vehicle would be mainly used by that team. And most of the people trained to drive it would, they would all be on that team.
Is there any plan to share it with our neighboring cities?
Sure.
If they have or not, but they.
Yeah, we have some mutual aid agreements and, and we do train with other tactical supports team. Right now, currently, we have a partnership with Oakland County Sheriff's Office that has their own tactical team. There's been occasions, because we have not had a dedicated armored vehicle before we got recently the MRAP. If you know, last year, we had a, a budget amendment to add a RAM to that vehicle. We will still have and maintain that vehicle, so this will give us a second piece of armored to deploy. Before that vehicle, we had none. And we will lean heavily on Oakland County Sheriff's Office to bring their armor, which I've sat in myself and was very thankful to have.
Thanks.
Someone like to move the resolution?
Yeah, one other, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If I could just expand on that a little bit that Lieutenant Schuler reminded me of. This is, this vehicle would also serve as in extreme weather events such as a flood, tornado, something like that would provide our officers with a, a bigger, more agile piece of equipment to move around the city. And oftentimes, we had a flood back in 2014.
Right, we were just talking about that incident.
Right. And our patrol vehicles couldn't get down the roads to certain. I went and grabbed our Humvee, which we had just gotten at the time and was able to respond to a couple ambulance requests and get people out because obviously getting people out suffering a medical emergency in a weather event, it can be tricky.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, that's very nice, thanks.
Councilor Hoderick?
I'll move the I-5 standard purchasing resolution for GSA cooperative purchase Lenko Bearcat G2 Troy Police Department and budget amendment as printed in the agenda packet.
Support? Moved by Councilor Hoderick, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve I-5 standard purchasing resolution for GSA cooperative purchase Lenko Bearcat G2 Troy Police Department and budget amendment as printed in the agenda packet. Any additional discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain, that we approve all items in the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda this evening, all have been approved. There are no memorandums and future council agenda items to announce. Next up is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are two people signed up for public comment that are outside of Troy. I know one of them is actually a Troy business owner. With consensus, can we just move both of those up to now?
Sure.
Okay. Then first up is Matthew Capsha for backflow testing. Same rules as earlier, three minutes. When the clock or when the light turns yellow, you have one minute left and when it turns red, time's up.
Good evening. My name is Matt Capsha. I was the cross connection inspector in the city for over 23 years and I monitored the testing of backflow preventers in the city. When residential testing programs started in 2014, I kept track of testers' statistics for how many tests each passed and failed. Patterns emerged that some testers may be falsely underreporting failures and allowing these backflow preventers to remain in service needing to be repaired. This keeps the water supply at risk. This is a public safety issue. Some contractors are collectively charging customers tens of thousands of dollars and providing backflow test reports that falsely show that the assemblies have passed. Many residents have asked me if backflow testing is a scam. Although I feel that testing is not a scam, it is obviously, obvious that some customers are getting cheated because they are not getting what they paid for and they are not aware of it. I believe falsifying pub, backflow test reports constitute several felonies, including falsifying public legal documents and the use of computer in a crime. I believe these acts also violate city of Troy ordinances and other state laws, including the Consumer Protection Act, the Safe Drinking Water Act and others. I've expressed my concerns to numerous people in the city administration about these alleged crimes and nothing has been done about it. My immediate supervisors in the Department of Public Works always told me that this is not the city's problem and to just accept the reports that are submitted. I do believe it is the city's problem because the city is aware that crimes are being committed and is actually trying to cover them up, which possibly makes the city liable and open to lawsuits. I have discussed this issue with numerous people outside the city, including several attorneys, and all agree with me that crimes are being committed and the city should have done something about it. Some people, including one of the attorneys, have asked the question, are your bosses on the take? Since this question keeps coming up, it's, obviously means that to some people outside the city, this does not look good. Years ago, I retested some backflow preventers these suspect testers passed, only to have them fail. I then repaired them with parts that I personally paid for because I thought that was doing the right thing. The city is allowing water customers to be victimized by these unscrupulous contractors. The cities, citizens deserve better treatment than what they are getting. So, hopefully, citizens will now demand a proper investigation and some legal action. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Capsha. Next up is Mario Kezzi.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and ladies and gentlemen of the council. I just wanted to come here tonight and discuss a few things. First, I wanted to get into the history of Oakland Mall. As many of you know, as Troy residents, it was built in 1965 and I learned tonight Troy was created in 1955. So, 10 years later, I feel like, you know, it was instrumental in what you see there today. It was a pillar in our community and really if you look at historical Aerials.com, what was before and what was after Oakland Mall had a lot to do with that. So, I'm here tonight to discuss momentum and momentum is very, very important. Momentum for this project is very important for the future of Troy, not just for the future of Troy, but the whole surrounding community. We have 3.8 million people within a 45-minute drive time of Oakland Mall. So, momentum is everything and momentum is very fragile, as many of you may know. So, for me, I've taken the task and I don't know how I ended up with what I have today, but I grew up just a few miles from this site and I call it my life project. So, I'm here today, you know, advocating for that, advocating in a city that I love. And I want to sit here on the same side of the fence as you guys. And, you know, for us, again, I have, Mr. Rob, if he's still here, CFO, mentioned that the city is 98 to 99% developed. I have an opportunity, we have an opportunity, a one-time chance to take an 100-acre parcel and do some significant great things. And I'm willing to do and I'm, I'm, I believe I'm the guy for, I believe I'm the guy for the job. I'm here. And, you know, I have a specific interest in delivering these things. So, I only got a minute left and the, the point of that is I'm doing things, going to trade shows, traveling the country, trying to bring different things to the mall. For example, I had a conference call last week with a spa resort, $50 million spa resort that's interested because of me approaching them and some of the incentives that we put in front of them. We were 50 on the list for their expansion throughout the country. I am trying to accelerate these things, 20 saunas, wellness, real sustainability. In addition to that, a Kalahari-type resort. Now, these are things that you cannot have obstacles in front of you to obtain. And, you know, there's two different ways this project goes. One way is greatness, spas, wellness, mental health, the real cure to mental health, the real cure to sustainability, family-friendly resorts. The alternative is, could be standard suburban multifamily, could be self-storage, not things that I want to stand in front of you guys and discuss. So, with that saying, with that said, I'm just looking for a path forward and I need help. I don't want to be, I got, I'm out of time. But, you know, some of you know why I'm making this speech and, you know, I just want to address that because I want to be successful for this project because this project is very important for, for Metro Detroit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kezzi. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment at this time in the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to respond or reply from council administration? Mayor Protem Gunn?
In regards to the, the backflow, is it possible that we know these companies that are not doing a good job? Is there any process for accrediting them or?
Kurt? I'll ask Kurt Bovin Siep, our public works director, to answer that.
Thank you. Yes, these, these companies do require a licensed plumber and they require state, licensed through the state of Michigan. LARA is the agency that regulates those licenses. As I've discussed with Mr. Capsha in the past and other city administration, LARA is the best avenue to report any violations in their licensing and what they're doing. They are the ultimate authority who has the authority to revoke the license, which would not enable them to, to practice in the city or anywhere else. The city of Troy does not have the authority to regulate those licensings. All we can do is bring the information forward to LARA.
Plus, my experience is if you do report the contractors to LARA, you can get a financial, you know, they can repay you for the damages.
I, I don't believe the city of Troy has experienced any damages, but the, the residents who, who are, if they were falsely taken advantage of, they, they would be the recipients of any damages.
Okay. Actually, I have a follow-up question that I'm going to ask it. Do we still, maybe it's not for Kurt, but do we still print recommended or potential? I haven't got my backflow tested in a while. Does it still include a list?
There's a list of contractors. It is not a recommendation from the city. It's a list of contractors.
Okay. And is it clearly stated that they're not recommendations, they're just a list? I can't, I'm sorry to ask the questions.
Yes, yes, yes it is. Yes it is.
I'm sure the city attorney's office is going to make sure that it's pretty clear.
There's been a lot of discussion. I mean, backflow prevention is very important, obviously. We're protecting our water system. And when we, when the state gave the, the legislation, the regulation to have municipalities enforce testing on irrigation, we went through a process and we were going to do it similar to the irrigation, or excuse me, the sidewalk replacement, where we were going to go through a bidding process and hire contractors and residents could then choose to use that contractor and we would invoice it. But the cost would be astronomical because of all the administration that goes in with that. We investigated that to try to help protect our residents the best we can. Again, at the end of the day, these licensing requirements are done by the state of Michigan. We don't have much authority over that. If they're licensed, they can perform it. If someone isn't performing even to our standards, we report them to LARA. We don't have the authority to say you can't operate in the city of Troy. There is no ordinance, there is no authority to do that. Again, we do our best we can to protect our residents. We provide the, the list of contractors that are on, licensed plumbers that are on LARA's list and it's up to the individuals to choose who they want to hire. Again, it's, it's a private system, so the city has very limited ability to go in and regulate that.
It seems to me if there's a known contractor with a pattern of practice of potentially falsifying records, they should be reported to the attorney general's office or some other consumer protection agency with the ability to properly investigate and enforce such actions, I would think.
I believe that that has been done by Mr. Capsha.
Okay. Well, that seems to be the best place for that to be handled, as long as we're protecting ourselves from a city standpoint as well, which my assumption is we are, but we can follow up further if we need to.
I have another question. I mean, so if, if there is a contractor that's questionable, can we not include it as part of our recommended list or is that not something that we should?
It, it's not a recommended list.
Oh, sorry. There are list of, the list of contractors, the potential contractors, do we, do we?
Does it, does it make sense at this point to continue to list companies that maybe have multiple complaints about them regarding this issue? I mean, is there, I, I don't want us to be in the, I'm sorry we're talking about this, but I don't want us to be in the position of having to evaluate each company when it's easier to take, these are the licensed companies that provide the service. So, then you get to the question of, well, does it make sense to then not provide any list and say, search LARA records for a registered or licensed company? And I'm sure this conversation was had 10 years ago when it first started or whenever it was, but perhaps it's time to reevaluate that if there had been a pattern of complaints and that have been verified potentially. I, my neighborhood bands together and uses one company and we stopped using that company because there was an issue with it. So, I, I know that happens, but I just, I don't know. I, Mr. Capsha sent previous correspondence to, to me and to others and I know that the city has looked at it, previous city manager, I believe. But I, you know, he's still here. I'd want to make sure that there's, you know, if we're turning our eye to something inadvertently and if there's something we can do better, then I'd like to explore that. But that said, it's not really a question for you Kurt.
Understood.
That, that, if I could ask, I mean, that's just out of clarification, I mean, do we list all the, everybody that's there in the LARA list or do we have a subset of that?
It's, it's a subset. We don't list everyone because that would be hundreds of people throughout the state. So, we tend to do companies that are central to Troy.
Local, but, but we don't really try to grade or evaluate them. We just say, these are the ones locally and you, you judge.
That are licensed to perform the work. That is correct. Yes.
Councilor Hoderick?
I was going to say, yeah, we can definitely look into that, give council a report where we're at. I, I'm learning a lot about this myself, coming into it relatively new and give options and the best way to move forward to protect the city. And of course, I'll work hand in hand with the city attorney.
Heather Hoderick?
I just, I remember 10 years ago when this first came from the state to, mandated to do this and there was, there was all sorts of kinds of conversation about, about it. People were frustrated that they were being asked to do it, even though it is a water safety component of our responsible living with our homes. One of the things that was frustrating people is they didn't know necessarily how to find the contractor to come do their backflow testing. So, in some respects, this list we're talking about is, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. It's a list that's from the LARA licensing. If there's an issue when somebody uses someone from that list, going to LARA to have it remediated, it's just a list that we, we wanted staff to provide because people were at a loss as to how to go about doing this testing. It was, it was a thing. It was a big thing. There was major council conversation about it. So, I under, my point is, is I can understand the pickle that you all are in and, yeah, we don't want to give on a list someone that's known as having an issue, but if LARA is still licensing them, then as far as we know, they're a licensed provider, correct?
Correct. If I can just clarify one thing, it's, it's Mr. Capsha's opinion that this, this one individual company is statistically not performing well. Since his departure, we have instituted new software that looks at all of those contractors and we have a cross, a new cross connection inspector with actually a person below them that is paying a little bit closer attention to that. But again, if we find a discrepancy statistically, because that's what we're looking at, that's reported to LARA because we don't have any authority to say, you can no longer test in Troy. That it's up to the state of Michigan to revoke their license, to do an investigation and to revoke their license.
So, I have a question.
Thank you Kurt.
Thank you Kurt. If, if you, for a resident, if they are concerned about a contract, and I don't know if we can answer it or not, if they are concerned about a contractor, how would they be able to find out if it's a questionable contractor? Is there any way for them to, to know?
A lot of residents call our cross connection department and ask that same question, you know, is this irreputable? And they can say, you know, we've, we've taken a lot of reports, they fill out the report correctly, we've had no issues. I, I don't know if our cross connection inspectors will go as far as say, you know, this particular one statistically always passes because that's what you're looking for. I mean, because it's next to impossible if you test 100 backflows, you're going to get one to fail, right? So, statistically, if everything passes, that, that raises some questions. So, we have to also be very careful of what we say in any type of recommendation, right? Because if perchance, they did do 50 and miraculously, they did all pass legitimately, then we could never negatively impact that, that company as well.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
So, let's, because I just had mine done Friday. So, let's say it passed, how would I know if it really didn't pass?
You, you as a consumer, as a resident that's not familiar with how to test and not overseeing that, you wouldn't know.
So, then how do we find out if it's a problem later?
Yeah, I, I mean, again, not knowing, if you as a person not knowing how to test that backflow and what to look for as they're testing, you would, you, you would trust the company you hired. You know, that's, that's with any contractor, right? That you're not familiar with the processes, you, you trust that they're doing the right thing.
Okay.
Thank you. I think Mr. Kezzi loved, but I know that there's a lot of talk about the Oakland Mall and the work he's doing and certainly we will be supportive, I think, as a whole where we can be and we'll also hold the line on what we need to as the city administration as it relates to everything else. But of course, we wish him well. Oakland Mall is a gateway to our city from the other side and we love its history. Next up, no council referrals. Anyone have any comments on the reports? I think there's some good ones in there. If you're at home or here, check them out. Council. Council comments. We've been pretty quiet tonight, so. Councilor Chamberlain.
Just have a, a quick question. So I was looking at J7 about the increase of student members on the, on GTAG, the Global Troy Advisory Committee, and it made me think of the Planning Commission. And I've never asked, I know at one point we had a student representative and kind of why did they end and, you know, could that ever be reinstated? Just to have that, a young voice helping us think about issues of housing and whatnot, even though it's a non-voting position.
I know the answer to that, but I don't know if I'm the right person to answer. Previous city manager decided not to reappoint. I didn't want a student representative in the Planning Commission. Not sure of his reasons, but he made that choice. I don't know if the bylaws of the Planning Commission allow for a student representative again, or if it's at the discretion of the Planning Director.
We'd have to look into that.
Global Troy, Global Troy asked to have the increase.
I saw that.
So we could have school representation, which was a good idea, so.
Actually, I had a follow-up question on that. Student, if we appointed a student representative in a committee or anything, this particular class, it's a partisan recreational committee, is that valid for the rest of the term or is it only for a year? So you need to reappoint if somebody is interested.
Yeah, I think the student terms go through July 31st.
July 31st, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other council comments? All right. We already dealt with the public comment for those other items. There's no closed session this evening, so we're adjourned.